Stephen, I'm gonna mute you, okay?
I am calling this informational hearing for town meeting day to order. It is 6:01 PM and there are people here in the multipurpose room as well as people online. We are recording this meeting. Information needs to be posted, the recording needs to be posted within 24 hours for anybody who can't be here. So I am going to turn it over to Paul to moderate for us tonight.
Hello, so this is Paul Blaze and we've got just a few folks online, one, two, three, four, five folks online. The, so informational meeting is to review the, what we're gonna be voting on on town meeting day and the ability to ask any questions that you have about the budget or about whatever. So we're gonna be doing the meet to candidates after the select board portion of the meeting. So I guess we can go right over to the select, to the, to the warning, which in the town meeting book is page seven. And, if we go down to Article Three, which is, shall the town approve the select board expenditures of, it's somebody here, $2,518,875 of which $2,097,575 dollars shall be raised by taxes and $421,300 by non-tax revenue to care for the expenditures and liabilities of the town for fiscal year 26. Does anybody have any questions for the select board on there?
May I make a statement about this? Okay, so one of the things that the select board did in preparing this budget over the course of, I don't know, too many meetings. We use a nice technique of linking from one spreadsheet to another, which allows us to not have to type things in over and over again. And one of the things that we discovered after signing the warning is that we had made an error in pointing to one of the formulas. So our expectation is that the board will come up with a more precise dollar amount, which will be somewhat less than what you see in the booklet. We think that, Karen, do you have the amounts? Okay, let me give that, let me give that mic to you.
So what part of the process, because as you can imagine, and if those of you who've been following how we construct the budget, it's a real iterative process and we go through sort of each time and we update it as we get additional information. Early on in the process, we put in placeholders for some of the, for the trucks. So if you go to page fourteen, and this is where, where we'll see some numbers. The numbers that were impacted were the truck financing principal of 7696, the invest, the interest on the same trucks of 7695. So those two numbers were placeholders. And I had linked them to what the total financing and interest were in fiscal 25. Problem is, well, not the problem, it's actually good for us, the, one of the trucks was paid off. So those two numbers are effectively high by roughly forty some odd thousand dollars. So raise and appropriate will come down if you go to page sixteen, and if that's the only change that we make. Page sixteen right now says how much shall be raised by taxes and it's 2,097,575. When I make that correction, which now we have fiscal 26 numbers following, following a series of discussions, 2097,575 will become 2,0054,627. So that is a reduction of almost 43,000. 627. So the principal, the principal's gonna come down 36,000 and the interest comes down six, give or take round numbers. And that's, that's really just because one truck got paid off. There may be, you know, a couple of dollars here and there as we finalize financing on, on a couple of other pieces of equipment. But that, that was the biggest, the biggest change and I just didn't catch that placeholder, so that was my fault.
Any questions about that aspect? Hold on just a sec, we're gonna get you a mic so people online can hear too.
Yeah, I'm sorry, so because of the folks that are gonna be online in the recording and all that stuff, if we could kind of do this like a town meeting where you just say who you are and then whatever your question is, thank you.
Hi, Sean McLaren, the question is on page fourteen, Equipment Reserve Fund, is that something that's going to be posed this year? Is it stated as a pending? Is there a capital fund for equipment?
It is my recollection that we decided not to have a capital fund for equipment. Is that yours, Karen?
Donna Eastup, join the meeting.
It wasn't a decision during this process, the Equipment Reserve Fund has been zero in the budget for 24, 25, and again 26. It's my belief that we need a capital reserve fund. Yeah, yeah, but it wasn't, it wasn't an active decision to make it zero.
I wanted to note a couple of things that you're not gonna find in the budget, because obviously you won't see them, so you won't know that we didn't put them in. One of the things we chose not to do was to put another warned article on about the need in the near future to purchase a grader, which is the largest piece of equipment that we have in terms of cost. Because we have replaced the excavator and the loader in this year, we just felt that that would be too much for the taxpayers to wanna tackle. But you should just be aware that that's coming at some point. Another thing that we did not budget for, we had had some discussions about putting a four-wheel drive package on one of our trucks that goes up Panel Hill Road, that was supposed to be like 32,000. We did not budget for that. We did not budget to do any website maintenance upgrades, which has been something we've been thinking we need to do. And then the last thing I wanna note that we didn't budget for is a fiscal year 26 audit. We are doing the fiscal year 25 audit that was voted on at town meeting a few years ago. But the cost for those audits is quite a bit higher than I think we anticipated. So while we've been putting money in reserve for that, you will see that that line item for, for reserve for the audit has, is higher than it has been in last, the last year. And the board does need to have further discussion about the value in having a fiscal year audit by a professional auditor every year. We had not done that and formalized that, but just another thing for you to, to be aware of that will be a topic of discussion going forward.
So Karen, I'm gonna ask a question about what you were just talking about. So if the, on page sixteen, if how much shall be raised by taxes goes down to 2,054,627, that would also mean that the approved highway and select board expenditures numbers is also gonna go down. Okay, so, okay.
And Paul, if I'm not mistaken, logistically, if somebody on the board makes that motion, you will give us the first opportunity to speak about it and give these corrected numbers? I think we did that a few years back, that's why I've got that in my head, we can talk about that later.
Yeah, it's very simple, I mean, I can, give me two seconds and I can accept the rule.
Well, while Karen's looking that up, does anybody have any other questions about the budget? Which would be the article that, the first article we're discussing?
This isn't supposed to be funny, but where are the streetlights in Halifax? We're budgeted, we spent thirteen hundred dollars, I'm just curious, where are our streetlights?
There are a couple out here, and there's really just a handful of them. They have been upgraded in the past few years to LED, so they are costing less money. But there are some here in the village, is my understanding, the only ones that we have.
I'm ready with the changes, if you guys have your pencil. So if you go to page fourteen, and you'll see where it says Truck Financing Principal, line seven, account 7696, that number would become 106,709. And you can see all these numbers, just, if you wanna check my work, which is always good. If you go to page twenty, that's the financing schedule, so you can see where I'm linking. So the first change, the first change would be 7696, that number becomes 106,709. The interest on truck financing would go from 25,265 to 19,260. So that total equipment financing number would go down from 239,708 to 196,760. The major change totals, and this is where you see the summary on the raise and appropriate page. If you go to page fifteen, the subtotal highway and equipment is 1,86298. That correction would be 1,817,351. So the total raise and appropriate for the highway would go from 1,603,498 to 1,610,551. And then if you go to raise and appropriate, that's where those numbers that I just gave you will, will show up. And if it's, if it's easy, Edie, I can always do a handout, if you wanna do a handout for the, for the actual meeting, that just replaces this page, the raise and appropriate page.
That, that won't be a bad idea.
Wait, nobody has to take notes. But I'm happy to, happy to do that. Just since we're, as we're going, the total funding requirement in that box there, which right now says 2,518,875, that number would be 2,475,927. Then you have the income against expense, the raise and appropriate, instead of being 2,97575, that number will be 2,054,627, which is an aggregate difference of 42,948. But I'm happy to, we can easily do a handout for page sixteen.
And, and I think the important thing from Paul, from Paul's perspective as the moderator is the change in the wording on the warning itself, cuz that's what people are gonna be voting on, the two big numbers, right, changed. Thank you.
People keep joining, that's what that funky thing is. Does anybody have any other questions about the budget? Come on, there's gotta be. Really? Oh, that'd be awesome. I'm not a Zoomy, I'm a WebExy. Oh, how do we disable that for this? Okay. There's a few, oh, then, yeah, then Emily must be on. Hey Emily, if you're there, could you be letting folks in for us?
Oh yeah, I click that button anytime it pops up, I got it, don't worry.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions on the budget? Yes?
Hello, Nina Bond, that's my name. I have a question, forgive my ignorance, with all of the maintenance and the roads and all the things, are we contracting out for like labor and maintenance?
Only for special projects. So for example, in this year, in this budget, we are going to be doing a hatch school road structure. It's a large box culvert and that was contracted out, we bid it out and, and took the lowest bidder to do that work. The other thing that gets contracted out per se is paving. We do not have equipment for paving, so we go out to bid for that as well. But the day-to-day grading of the roads, the plowing of the roads is something that our, that our town crew does. The other thing that, where we supplement our labor sort of, is in gravel deliveries. So the gravel gets delivered to us instead of us sending our trucks to wherever to, to pick up the gravel and bring it here. So those are some ways that labor is done by others.
Okay, the reason I bring it up is cuz we have so many talented people in the town who know how to do stuff. And I, and so that, that's why I was asking about that, cuz we do have lots of folks out there who know how to do things. I mean, well, I don't, well, I don't know if it would be volunteer work, but, cuz you wanna, you know, compensate people, but we have, we have mechanics and, I'm trying to think of more things. Like, we have mechanics and people who can learn how to do jobs. Landscaping, wanna do more? Okay, I'm sorry, but I mean, there's people out there who can, who can work, so I would just.
We, yeah, we, we do follow and we have followed a formal process for hiring, cuz we do, we have had vacancies on our highway department, which is a five-person crew and we've got a new person starting soon. The qualification that we most want to see for that is a commercial driver's license. And they, you know, but with that, they do a lot of other things like just roadside mowing. We have equipment to do that and do that on, on our, you know, with our own staff as well. We do, and we could probably use additional people who might be interested in doing plowing on an ad hoc basis. We've used a lot of that labor in the past few months because we haven't been fully staffed on the road crew. So those folks should feel free to reach out to the highway supervisor and just let, let them know, you know, hey, I, I might be willing to, to do that on a, you know, occasional basis, that would be helpful.
I appreciate your time, thank you.
Doug and Mary Lou, you have your hand up?
Hi.
Yeah, yeah, Doug at Mary Lou Parkhurst and Fowler Road. We have a question on Article Four, I don't know if you wanna take that right now or wait.
Let's hold off, we're still talking about the budget on three, so we'll, we'll get to that in a few minutes.
Okay.
Thanks.
Hi, it's Sean McLaren, road crew wages, is that an appropriate amount, the increase just under six percent?
So those numbers are based off of actuals and again, we, we are, we have had some turnover in the road crew. So those numbers are what we feel we need.
Just to be more competitive?
Yes, certainly with a 2.4% unemployment rate, filling those roles has been terribly time-consuming and we're paying more in overtime until we fill, fill that role. So in addition, in years past, we did some adjustments because wages have been increasing across the country to try to make sure we could attract and retain employees.
Great idea. The health insurance though, is that just a cost increase or is that adding into individuals?
So the health insurance budget line item, the way that we decided to handle that this year is to put in a five percent increase. We don't know what the health insurance expenses will be. But we, we know what they are for the first half of the year, except because of the changes in staff, they might need a different plan for a different size family than what we originally budgeted for. We are anticipating spending some time discussing with the road crew the possibility that we, because we've, we've kinda capped it, last year we had a 16% increase in health insurance. So we've tried to cap it and we're gonna be talking about the plans that are available and how we might kind of rein those costs in, hopefully giving less money to the insurance company and making sure still that our staff have adequate health coverage. So it's gonna be a conversation we need to have over the course of this year. Those plans get adopted again in January, so we've got some time to talk, but it's a, it's a serious concern, yeah.
I do have a question. I was just wondering why when the town has all this new equipment and they're going to put a culvert in on Hatch School Road, why do we need to contract that out? Why can't the town do that?
So the hatch school, what has to happen with that is that is actually an engineered big concrete piece of structure, right? It's not, what they're doing is they're removing kind of one of those corrugated metal culverts and replacing it with something that meets state standards. And I think it was back in 2022, the problem with hatch school and how the water moves through there was identified. So there is a very specific enormous structure that has to go in. After, after the 2003 or 2004 flood on Pike, same kind of struc, this is even bigger than that one. So it's not something that the team can do, it's a big engineered piece of equipment. Or structure, it's not a piece of equipment, it's a structure.
We don't have the equipment to do that?
We don't have the team to do that, no. You have to have, we do not. Not to put in something quite that large. And we have a grant to cover the cost.
Does that count?
Which is, the grant, the max was $200,000 and the bid on that was roughly 180.
So it will.
So the crew, for all kinds of reasons, it makes, this is something that you, you want somebody to put it in who does this kind of thing on a fairly regular basis and folks that are certainly known to the Vermont Streams guys, Scott Jensen.
Does anybody have any other questions on the budget for Article Three? No, I'm not seeing any. I, I, I have one. So you said that in the, in the, in the budget, there wasn't gonna be anything there's a grader that needs to be replaced, but that's not in there, four-wheel drive for the truck, you listed a couple of the things. Is there gonna be another request for special town meeting for later in the year for a grader?
Everybody think good thoughts that that piece of equipment will stay functioning. No, it's not anticipated that we will do that. We did ask the highway supervisor to try to get us a refurbishment cost on that and haven't seen that information yet. But that one, the, doing the special town meeting worked out last year because we could pair it with a primary meeting, so it was less expense because we had, we already had the people that staffed that for vote counting and such, not vote counting, but checking in voters. But at this point, the board is not anticipating having a special meeting unless it was petitioned to do so or, you know, the machine bites the dust sooner than we hope it will.
All right, well, I don't, the other hand raised online, so let's move over to Article Four on page seven, which is the treasurer's budget and salary for current taxes at 20,000 plus 4,000 for expenses for fiscal year 26. Doug and Mary Lou, you had a question on that or comment?
Yes, Doug and Mary Lou Parkhurst again, Fowler Road. We were looking through the worksheet for fiscal, fiscal year 26 and we did not see those two figures, the 20,000 and the 4,000, anywhere in the worksheet and we wondered if we missed them or, or were they, were they there?
Hey Doug, hey Doug, it's Karen. So that's one of the things that, that's something that the, part of the treasurer's budget, it's not the select board budget and it's not the highway budget, right? So what you see in the early pages are just select board and highway. And when you go to page, and this is the way, if you go to page seventeen, you'll see a number of things, like we don't have in our budget property taxes and we don't have various revenues and self-funded revenues from various locations. So the town operations, taxes paid to the school, those are things that are in the treasurer budget.
So.
Okay. Yeah, we saw the assistant treasurer was on that first page, but we didn't see the others, so. But I, I think you've answered the question, it's just not broken out apparently on page seventeen.
Well, and is it safe to say that each one of these articles is upon itself? So you've got the, you've got the budget, Article Three, Article Four is something, right? It's not, it's not in the town expenditures. Likewise, Article Five, Six, Seven, Eight, those there that, well, not Seven, but Four, Five, Six and those numbers you're, you vote on and they would get added to the, you know, what your tax rate's gonna get built from? If that makes any sense.
Yeah, okay, that, that explains it to me, so.
Great, and I think one other thing, if I am not, I may be mistaken on this, I take training on, I took some training on town meeting. I think that one article has to be separate for some reason from a legal perspective. Which, Article Four, yeah, like the treasurer's budget has to be separate each year, which is just, you know, an interesting fact, I guess.
Any other questions on Article Four? Any other questions on Article Four? Moving right along to Article Five. The voters will approve the sum of $6,000 to continue, continue support of the Whitingham Free Public Library and Recognition of Services Materials Programs provided to the residents of Halifax in accordance with 24 VSA subsection 2691. Any questions? Comments?
I'll ask a question. What was the amount last year and what is the reasoning for the increase?
So Mark Alveson, the trustee from Halifax to the Whitingham Free Public Library. The budget for last year was $5,000. That's the amount that's in the current budget. This warrant would replace that 5,000 with 6,000, so it doesn't add the 6,000, adds it to 1,000. The total budget for the Whitingham Free Public Library went up about $5,000 this year. Now, some of you may not know that that library is actually a branch of the Whitingham government. So, I mean, they're in the Whitingham Town Building. The town pays for all the utilities and everything, so, but their budget went up about 5,000 bucks. They're hoping to get about 1,000 of that from Halifax. And amazingly enough, according to Christine Sweeter, the director of the library, about 20% of the books checked out go to Halifax residents. So I think it's a pretty good deal. I mean, they pay, you know, 85, 90,000 bucks a year, we pay 5,000. I think it's a pretty good deal.
Any other questions on Article Five? No? Oh, yes, in the, Kara.
More of a comment in case I don't make it to town meeting. I just, I recently took my five-year-old grandson, and we found these backpacks chock full of all sorts of toys at the library. It was just a whole, it just kind of opened up to me what a resource it is, so it's just a great deal.
I will add that I asked Christine to prepare a one-page flyer of all the other stuff that's in the library, that you can check out, sports equipment, the backpacks that Kara mentioned. I've got 10 copies of that flyer if anyone wants it, but the other thing I'm interested in doing is increasing the usage by, from people here, so I'd be happy to hand you a copy of that.
Lynda Lyon, and here I have Kelso and Gussie who are volunteer, but they also volunteered at the Whitingham Free Park for summer camp. And there's a high proportion of Halifax children that attend that, that camp's amazing. Amazing. So we...
Thank you. Does anybody have any other comments or questions about Article Five? Okay, moving right along. Shall the town of Halifax vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $500 to support the Southern Vermont Transit, the Mover, to provide transportation services to residents of the town in accordance with 24 VSA 2691? That's the same statue as the library?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Oh, oh. All right, I'm like, hmm, okay. Does anybody have any questions about the expenditure for the Mover? Okay. Article Seven is shall the town vote to exempt the Halifax Community Club from property taxation for the ensuing five years pursuant to 32 VSA 3840? Any comments, questions? Hearing none. Moving along, I am not going to read this, but it's the, I'm not going to read all the different items that are in here, but that's the, the one for the 15, totaling 15,574 to the following social service agencies, and it lists them all out. If anybody has any questions or comments on any of those?
I had, this is Edie Edwards again. I have a comment that we will also likely be trying to amend this item. We have been aware that the Visiting Nurse Association and Hospice of Vermont and New Hampshire has not served the town of Halifax due to staffing shortages for the past two years. We, you know, there was an article in the paper about that, and I had inquired about why we were still donating to this organization when they were providing only minimal service compared to what they used to do. But I was told we couldn't take it off of this unless the CEO of the organization said we don't want the money. Just a week or two ago, we got a message from the Visiting Nurse Association and Hospice saying, in fact, they were going to continue to not be able to serve Halifax, and asking if an appropriation had been requested, that we do not provide it to them. So this will be another $1,900 difference because they are not really able to serve us. If you look through the town reports, they did provide a report to us, and if you compare that with the number of people they served in prior years, it went from, like, it went, was half last year of what it was the year before, and this year it said they provided services to three people in Halifax. So this will be something that, you know, we're sorry that we don't have this agency serving us anymore, but I think it will be nice not to have to give a donation when they can't serve us.
Any other questions about Article Eight? Comments? I don't see anything from anybody online. Does anybody here have any questions or comments about any of the social service agencies on Article Eight? I guess I have a, I have a question. If VNA isn't able to provide services, is there someone else that's backfilling that for hospice services in our community?
So my understanding is that Bieda serves the town, and also Senior Solutions apparently is doing some case management now as well. They did not petition us to ask for more money, and I know that I made a call on behalf of someone in town and was pleased to get some, a friendly voice on the line, but they have not explicitly asked us to shift funding to them. But that might, you know, again, the voters can do that from the floor if you chose to do that. The first one was Bieda, and I don't know much about them other than that they do provide home healthcare in town. I don't know if they're a nonprofit or a for-profit. And of course, there's also the Brattleboro Hospice Association, but I don't, again, they're a nonprofit group for hospice specifically.
Just to be sure you understand, Brattleboro area hospice does not provide medical help. It provides other types of assistance.
Okay, any other questions about the Article Eight? All right, that's all that we got, folks.
I just want to make a quick comment about town meeting day for people who maybe haven't come to that before, or just kind of like what the day looks like. So the polls are in this room, and they're open from 10:00 in the morning until 7:00 o'clock. But at 10:00 in the morning on that day, this amazing thing happens where we all get together. There will be probably three or four times the number of people that are here now. You can come for the whole day, and we walk through each of these articles and vote on them. Once that meeting is done, we have a lunch at noon, and at 1:00 PM, we resume with the school board meeting. We are hoping to have a special select board meeting like we did last year after the town's business is concluded. We're not sure exactly when that's going to happen, and we have some questions about the logistics of it that we haven't quite sorted out as a board yet, but that would be an opportunity for us to meet as a community and talk about things that are not on the warning. So it's, it's a day, if you haven't done it before, come and learn and see and meet your neighbors, because it's really kind of cool.
And that's all, folks. So that's the select board portion. We're now going to, the select board folks are going to step down. We're going to have the folks that are going to be, meet the candidates. So if you go to page nine, it's going to list all the folks that are running for any kind of office, and they'll be able to, you'll be able to ask them questions. They can tell you how wonderful they are. Well, why did, why did Edie leave? You're, you're up second. Select Board. So, so I was going to, I was going to ask Edie and Lori to come on up. The first one is town meeting moderator. That's me. If anybody has any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer any of them. No? You, I, I will, I will say, where is it? It's later on in the thing. Yeah, for the Halifax School Moderator, well, we'll talk about that later, never mind. Does anybody have questions for me for town district moderator? Nope? Okay. Edie and Lori, do you want to come on up? If you want to do a little, hi, this is who I am and this is why I'm here kind of thing?
So my name is Lori Marvajani. Sorry, can you hear me? And I'm running for the, is it on? Yeah, it's on. I'm running. Oh, there it is. Sorry. I'm running for an open select board position. I recently retired and found that I had some extra time on my hands, believe it or not. Finished some of those projects that we also were going to do when we retire. So I'm a little bit caught up on those, and I, I found that I missed people. I don't, there's so many people in town I don't know anymore, like most of you here. I grew up in Halifax, lived here for about 60 years. I attended Halifax School when it was a three-room schoolhouse. And then after spending some time down south, my family and I moved back here, and we built a house here in Halifax. We raised our kids here, and they went to the same school, which by then had, was being renovated and expanded into the school you see now. I also served on the school board for a few years, but I think if my calculations are correct, I'm about 15 years behind Chum. Something like that. Anyway, we do enjoy the small-town life. So I retired a couple of years ago. I worked over at Riggs Difler in Jacksonville, and we are, we're, we were, are, they are a utility company. So what I did was I worked for the Environmental Construction Division. I was a project manager. What I would do was I would go out and walk the right-of-ways, come up with cost estimates for National Grid, Eversource, whoever we were working for. And behind the scenes, I was responsible for tracking that job, doing monthly financial reporting and so on. And it, it'll be a good, a good job to gain the experience that I needed, that I can pull out of that for serving on board. So as a new member on the board, my big plans are to just sit back and listen and learn for a while when I get my feet wet, whatever area they need me to help in, focus on, whatever, I'll be more than happy to do that. I am the kind of person that I like to get all the facts together before I make a decision, so, you know, I don't like to make hasty decisions about anything. So then finally, a little bit of voting information. So you're going to see Edie and I together on the three-year ballot, or three-year term on the ballot. It wasn't my intention to run against the incumbent, but just the way that it, you know, I filed and then she filed after, and you were concerned about continuity, so you also filed for the three-year term, which at the time I thought was vacant, because that person was leaving. So anyway, after the fact, both positions need to be filled, so I'm just asking that people write me in on the two-year term. And then hopefully, there's nobody else running, so we, we know. So that's about it.
So, hi, Edie Edwards. I have served on the select board now for probably a total of seven to eight years over a couple of different terms. I love doing it, even when it's hard, even when there are people who are unhappy with you. I just enjoy the opportunity to try to explain how things work in a small town and what resources we have, sometimes what resources we don't have. And I'd be honored to have your vote again. I decided that the three-year term would work best for me in my life where I am because I'm hoping, I've got my fingers crossed, that in two years' time I will retire from my paid job, and I would like to have that final year of having not a blank slate, because blank slates kind of freak me out. So I have really enjoyed working with others on the board, newer people coming in who have new ideas and enthusiasm, and I'm just hoping that, again, I can serve you in this capacity. So, thanks.
Does anybody have any questions for either Edie or Lori? Yes.
On, on the select board thing with Edie? My name is Marian Kennedy. Okay. Where you have Edie and Lori and for the three-year term, and then blank for the next one. Supposing we decided that we really wanted either Edie or Lori, so we marked, like, Edie for three years and wrote her in. Now, would they look at that and say she can't be three years and two years at the same time? So they would throw that out?
No, actually, you can run for more than one seat at a time, different positions or the same positions. And you, you might end up, if people chose Lori for both positions, she might have to make a decision about which seat she wanted to take. And we did see that happen in the recent past of, you know, last five years or so here in the town. So it is possible that, you know, that that could occur, but I'm, I'm certainly hoping I get to work with Lori, and we'll see how it goes. But I'm, I'm certainly hoping I get to work with Lori and we'll see how it goes.
Kara Shayet. And Lori, I, and I'm sorry if I missed this and you said it, serving in some other capacity isn't any prerequisite. But have you had any opportunity to serve, you know, in any kind of board capacity in the past?
I was on the school board, I think for six years. That was quite some time ago. That's basically it. I mean, my job has pretty much consumed most of my time.
Anybody have any other questions for, for Lori or Edie? Nope, already done. Thank you, folks. Uh, let's see, Lister, three years. Mary Brewster. Who's also for collect our delinquent taxes. And I see Mary's there online. Would you like to say anything?
Um, I think they're self-explanatory, delinquent taxes, collects delinquent taxes. But most importantly, well, there's been a new laws and changing, not drastically. The way that position conducts business. But the most important thing to me is, is I always tell people, I work for you. And I try to really be kind and, and work with the person who has delinquent taxes and not, not be pushy or mean or anything like that. I mean, I sometimes go down and have a cup of coffee and pick up the check. So I, I love the job. Lister, Tina and I have, I've been doing it about eight years, I think now, and I really like that job. Not only because I get to see the inside of houses that I only see from a distance, but I get to know the people in the community. And I, and also Tina and I both try very much to work with people and, and listen to them.
Does anybody have any questions for Mary for either one of these roles? I'm not seeing any, thank you, Mary.
Okay.
Let's see, we've got a couple of auditors that are blank. Trustee of Public Funds for the Kale, Kale Funds, Stephen Cohen, who I don't believe is online and I don't see here. Cemetery Commissioner for three years, Linda Swanson, that I don't think I see either. Uh, School Director, uh, there's actually two School Director positions that are opening. Oh, I'm sorry. I blew right over Moderator, so Halifax School Moderator, Kara Shayet. So I've always run for that, but I'm the Chairman of the School Board now. So, or I was last, was, I am this year, so I can't really do both. So this year at Town Meeting, what's going to happen is I'm going to open the meeting. And then when it comes time to actually vote on, you know, to do the vote, uh, the motion for the actual budget, I'm going to step aside and let Edie take over as the, as the Select Board Chair, which can do that by statute. But next year, hopefully there'll be somebody else. So, and that's Kara, who's on the ballot.
Do it from here.
Well, you can feel free to come up.
Come up. Hi, my name's Kara Shayet. I think most everyone probably knows who I am. And if you know who I am, then you also know that I'm a lawyer. But I wanted to introduce my, sort of reintroduce myself in a certain way, even though this is like the most modest position that somebody could run for. But the, what folks may not know, I mean, folks know me but, or know about me, but may not know me. And so the way I got to, I didn't go to law school until I was almost 40. And the trip, sort of the path before that was in secondary ed, English, Spanish and bilingual ed and linguistics as well. And that actually led me into social service work for Central American refugees, which in a weird way led me to MIT. I was an administrator there, which got me into the mediation program at MIT. So training for mediation and then volunteering as a mediator within the university. And it was my work as a mediator that got me thinking about going to law school. And then after, actually after I moved to Halifax in 2011, I retrained as a mediator and was volunteering in the Greenfield District Court. And I lay that out because for me, there's kind of at least a dotted line, if not a straight line from mediating or being a mediator and being a moderator, not just because the words sound similar, but it's about facilitating conversations. And for me, that was really gratifying as a mediator. And moderating is in the context of Robert's Rules, which are sort of arcane. And I feel like some of, you know, my background kind of helps in that way as well. And the other thing I just wanted to say is that a lot of people do know me. And partly it's because I ended up really in the deep end of town governance issues, kind of since I moved to Halifax in 2011. And I was thinking in the last while, how did that happen? Well, I moved to town right before Irene and I, like everyone else, was really impacted by it. And I, like pretty much everyone else, answered that kind of all hands on deck call to help however you could. And one of the things that happened in the first couple of months after Irene was I was asked by a select board member if I would step into a vacancy on the Planning Commission. Somebody had moved out of town, just for the balance of his term, it was like six or seven months. And it was at a time when the Planning Commission was going to be, NZBA was going to be dealing with the flood regulations. And there was sort of a thought I had, a little background in municipal law and just the legal stuff might help in that regard. And from there, I ended up writing for the newspaper and then was just attending a ton of meetings. And I, I just ended up in the deep, and then served on the select board, ran a couple of times. But I ended up in the deep end long before I had an opportunity to just live in town, love the town, get to know people, get to be known. And I stand by everything I've done. But, you know, all things being equal, I would have liked the opportunity to just figure out where I fit and do kind of a toe dipping in and maybe entering the shallow end of the pool rather than the deep end. And I've stepped away from stuff for the last couple of years. And for me, this vacancy was kind of a reset. Maybe I'll toe dip and step into the shallow end and, and take it from there. So, thanks. That's my pitch. If anyone has any questions.
Does anybody have any questions for Kara? Awesome. So now there's two School Director positions. Both are looking for some write-ins and I think that there might be some write-in folks here that might want to have something to say. If, if you do, feel free to come on up. Oh, sure, come on up. Yep. So I guess if we can just go down the line and introduce yourself and, and then, sure, you got the mic.
My name is Cassie McLaren. And I've been thinking about what I wanted to say to you. I'm a write-in candidate for, there's two three-year positions. I'm the write-in candidate for the position that expires in 2027. So I've been saying, oh, I'm going for the two-year position. But anyway, it's the position that expires in 2027. It's always been important to me to be a part of my community. And I've started several years back. I thought that, you know, let's see what I want to do. And I began volunteering with the Senior Meal Program that a lot of Halifax residents go to. It's held in Jacksonville on Tuesday and Thursday. And I do the Tuesday. And we set up and serve and clean up for the seniors. And I really, really enjoy that a lot. And, you know, I've, you might have seen me behind the, in the ice cream wagon a couple of times this summer. I've done that. I'm on the Committee for the Community Hall with Laurel Copeland and all those great folks who do a heck of a lot of work. And Diana, who's here. But I've been working with them. And I also volunteered, I was on the Celebration Committee. So if you've seen me around, that's, that's sort of what I've been doing. And I'm a licensed clinical social worker. I'm a psychotherapist in private practice in Brattleboro. And a lot of my work has been with children. And, you know, as I'm thinking about getting involved in Halifax and I'm doing some stuff with seniors, which I love, I really thought, you know, my, my big passion is children. And I thought, well, how in Halifax can I do that? And there you go, the school board. So I decided to do it. Edie had told me a while ago that the position was open. And I do what I can tend to do sometimes, hemmed and hawed and I'm too busy because I work full-time and yada, yada, yada. But, so I decided to do it. And of course, I think it was the day after the candidate closed. So I'm a write-in and I'm learning how to be a write-in. I'm telling people about it. I wrote in Front Porch Forum. But that was, that's pretty much my story. And so Cass McLaren, write-in for the one that expires in 2027. So thank you.
I have to stand? Okay. Hi, my name is Nina Bond and I'm a write-in candidate for Halifax School Board. I am currently a Behavioral Paraprofessional for the Wyndham Southeast Supervisory Union. This position gives me insight on the day-to-day challenges and achievements of students and staff. My dedication to community started at a young age of 10. My first volunteer experience was at a nursing home where I established a true appreciation for intergenerational relationships. From there, I volunteered at a soup kitchen, health center, Sierra Club and YMCA. I was the recipient of a scholarship for my service. I have two children who attend Halifax Elementary. They are an inspiration to my commitment to the wellness and achievement of the youth in this community. I have a background in working with children with a variety of needs and abilities. My first job in public education was in 2020 during the pandemic. LJ, a second grade teacher, wrote in a reference letter. Nina is a wonderful person who understands that education is important. Teachers have a lot on their plate and that children have, each have unique needs. My campaign is driven by the need to uphold the Vermont values of unity and freedom. Let's ensure our, our students grow to be the best versions of themselves and thrive. Please consider Nina Bond for a write-in vote for the, the three-year term on March 4th at the Halifax Town Meeting. Nina with an N. It's okay. Do I hand it to Wade?
Yes, please. Oh, he's got one.
Oh.
Guys can have dual mic later on. Hello, my, hello, my name is Wade Ryan. I have two kids that come to school. My family has lived in this town for many years. My wife's family lived in this town. We're real big on community. We like to do our part, my wife more so than I. Recently, I found myself with more time on my hands than I like. I used to have four jobs, now I only have two. So there seems to be a lot of things going on in the school and I want to do my part to help out. Other than that, that's all I got.
All right, does anybody have any questions for Cassie, Nina or Wade?
Yes. Oh, you got to steal.
For, for the folks.
Yeah, just clarity about which, because we got three write-ins. So I get that Cassie's the one that expires 2027. Nina, you said three years, is that 2028? And Wade, you're also 2028?
Yes.
Okay, just, thank you.
Does anybody have any other questions? Anyone online? No, all right. I'm going to call that a wrap. Oh, there was a question. Is this how you get your husband to bring you something?
He's getting this. This is a weird question. Is there any conflict for someone working in the school district to also be?
It, I think you said it was in the southeast school district, right? Yeah, so it's a brat of the other.
Perfect, I knew that there was a difference there, but wasn't quite sure. Thank you.
Linda's got a question.
It, it's germane to our business here, although not in this book. I, I've tried to bring my absentee ballot and the box is always locked. I plan to go to Town Meeting, but anymore, I don't know when I might wake up with COVID or something that would keep me from voting. So when can I deposit my ballot?
You'd have to call the town, oh, nevermind.
We actually have the voting, the new voting ballot box out front. I don't know when Patty unlocks it. But we also do have a mail slot right next to our, that goes to a locked box in our foyer. So you can also deposit your ballots and they're perfectly safe. Nobody can get them to them but Patty.
Okay, so, so just to clarify, what Edie's saying is that the select board does have a key to that. So they should really focus on the, the actual elections drop box. And you can always drop it off at the Town Clerk's Office while they're open.
Well, that's a problem because I'm, I have not been apparently here when it's open and I'm leaving town tomorrow. And I don't want to put it in the mail because it took 10 days from the day I applied for it, for it to arrive. So I have little confidence in the mail and I'm really trying to be responsible and vote, but I'm being thwarted.
Tomorrow, what day is, tomorrow's Wednesday. So the Town Clerk's Office is open tomorrow. I was going to suggest maybe giving them a call and finding out when it's going to be open. I don't know if there's any other suggestions. Yeah, I don't. All right, does anybody have any other questions for our School Director Write-Ins? Nope, yes.
Could you clarify how to spell each person's name since it's all write-in?
That's a great question.
So my name is Wade Ryan, it's W-A-D-E and then R-Y-A-N.
Nina Bond, N-I-N-A, space, B-O-N-D.
Mine's a little bit longer. Cassie, my full name is Cassandra, but let's just stay with Cassie. C-A-S-S-I-E. And my last name is McLaren, M-C capital L-A-R-E-N.
Yeah. So think fancy car, James Bond. And Wade. Sorry, I don't have one for Ryan. All right, does anybody have any other questions for the candidates?
I have a question.
Yes, Stephanie.
Yeah, I know this is kind of a loaded question and I understand that the candidates aren't able to respond. But with the increasing costs of taxes in the town, the increasing cost of our state education, which is one of the highest in the nation, do they have any plans to help with that?
Hey, forgive, is it on? Okay. Forgive my ignorance, when I did the School Board webinar a couple of days ago, they said that the district has people who are paid to figure out all of the accounting stuff. And then we'll explain it to the school board. Um, so a person who's not an accountant will understand. That's, that's my understanding of that. I could be ignorant. Um, and I'm sure Paul has better answers. I'll hand it, hand it over.
I don't have much to add. I just know that, um, it was just, I guess, last night I went. To the meeting in Brattleboro that was put on by the, uh, the Southeast, uh, school district because I. Want to find out what our governor is proposing about the school districts. How he's talking about. Bringing however many we have, uh, down to five. And so there's a lot of discussion about that. All the. Representatives from different towns were there and this was Southeast District and we're Southwest, but. I thought that it would be good to start getting to know a little bit more about how the school budget works regardless of whether I get in. Or not. And I know that there's going to be big changes coming down the road, but that's down the road. So in the short term, I guess my long answer for the short term is I'm wanting to learn all about it is what I want to do.
So, um, honestly, I can't answer your question, but, um, I have been spending a lot of time online trying to learn. What a school board can and cannot do, what they, you know, what it entails and what. I'm supposed to do as a school board member. So I hope to, if I get elected or voted for the. Assist in any kind of decision-making.
Okay, thanks, folks. Does anybody have any other questions for our candidates? I'll see you, Danny. All right. I guess we'll call this part a wrap then. And we'll go over to our school district warning. Come on up, Chum. No, you're not done. I keep telling you, this is like the Hotel California. So let's see here. So which page is our warning? All right. So on the back covers are warnings on page 17. And, um, really the, um. Article three is really the article, only article we have. We're not gonna really be, um, doing much other than voting for the budget this year. The budget this year is, um, 2,055,155. The details on all the breakdown and whatnot is on, starts on page five. And kind of, kind of goes through. Uh, page five is kind of nice because what it does is it categorizes all the various, um, sections of the budget. And it tells you what the percentage change is for each one of those. So you can kind of break down and see exactly, oh, well, geez. You know, most of the, um, percentage increase is with the, uh, personnel costs. You know, in, this is, uh, most of the personnel in the, in the district are under contracts. Through the, um, through the, through the unions. So. Those are written contracts that we really don't have a whole lot of leverage on. The district as a, as a whole negotiates the, that one contract with all the teachers in. The, the supervisory union negotiates the contract with each one of the, um, the teachers that are in. All of the district, right? So Halifax, Reed's Borough, Stanford, uh, Weddingham, Wilmington. And that's the, that's the. The contract that everybody falls under. So a lot of those, the increases that you see there. Um, they're gonna be the contractual obligations for those. And then of course there's healthcare, which, you know, is always kind of like Edie mentioned for the town portion. It's kind of a crapshoot as to what's really gonna happen because, you know, you only have half of the. You, you only, you can, you only know the dollars for half of the year, the second half of the year. They don't set the rate until, what, like? The, yeah, it's, it's late. So it's after the budget's already written. So, um, so that's a good breakdown. Um, the bottom line, if you, if you flip back to, um, to page 12, you'll see kind of what a lot of folks. Like to know about, and that's the tax rate. And even though the budget is up. Because the state is always playing a shell game with how they're funding it and, and what percentages, you know, how everything breaks down. Tax rate's actually down this year. So it was 1.5813. And this year it's gonna be 1.5204. So that's a little bit of good news. It's always nice to be able to say you can have a tax decrease. I don't know. Does anybody have any questions about the budget or anybody from the board have any comments? Well, I know you have comments, but. Don't ask him. Okay, I'm not allowed to ask Chum. Does anybody have any questions, uh, for the school budget?
I know there's really no apples to apples across the state, but I'm just curious. You've, it says that this is a 14%. Increase per pupil spending and I'm just wondering where, where do we fit in the scheme of things? Are we, you know?
I don't know the answer to that. I, I, I don't know how other districts, I know a lot of districts have tax increases. Um, but I don't know where the scale falls for, um, per pupil costs. Do, do you? Do Chum, do you have any ideas?
I actually could not tell you what the average per pupil cost is. I'll just pop out a couple of figures here of when you're asking perspective, people on the school board, what they're gonna do about a budget. Okay, the first budget we got this year and, and our budget is not up 14% just because our per pupil cost is up 14%. They're not quite the same. The first budget we got this year when we had 196 ADM, average daily membership, which we don't have that many students. But last year was the first year they had weighted students for rural, for English, for all kinds of things, poverty. Weighted more than one-to-one. So last year was 196. Our, our tax rate would have come in at 137. Then the state in its infinite wisdom said, holy moly, we're not gonna have that much money. So let's cut our weighted students down. Let's just change the formula of weighted to students. So then it goes down to 178. So then our tax rate comes in at 1.5246, which is basically what Paul just said. I think I might be a hundredth of a cent off or something here. And then you look at other districts. From two years ago, when districts around here, the average or their per pupil cost was 18 and 19,000. That was before weighted pupils. So last year that takes a big drop. This year when the weighted pupils, they come up with a different formula. So then it goes up. I can't tell you what that, what it is, although I, I do know the average for. Union high schools in the state of Vermont is around 18,000 per student. And obviously it costs more to educate a high school student than it does an elementary student. So I've never seen a figure what the average was on elementary kids or students. Per year throughout the state. And somebody, I think it was Cassie, brought up the fact. That you went to a meeting in, in Brattleboro with the state in their infinite wisdom of taking 19 supervisory unions and, and. Cutting them into five, which would mean that Halifax or Brattleboro. We would be going up one side of the state or the other. Obviously we'd probably be going up the east side of the state. And would go all the way to Rutland. And the west side of the state with Stanford and Reed's Borough and Twin Valley and whatever would go all the way to Rutland. Just what would Rutland and a, and a Springfield have in common with Halifax? Or what would they care when you have one school board that would be per district? That would be part-time paid people and. It just. We actually spent, this had to be 15 years ago. We spent two years trying to come up with a way with. Wyndham North. Combining with Wyndham Southwest. And we could not save a penny because they had a, they had a business manager. We had one. If we combined, we needed two, plus then we needed an, an assistant. We had a superintendent, they had one. We could do one superintendent, but we needed two, two assistants. So we couldn't even work with Leland and Gray District and come up with any saving. I'm not sure how anybody's gonna work with any savings going with only five in the, in the whole state. But so far Scott in his infinite wisdom has not said how any of that's gonna work. He hasn't even come out with a, with a wish list of what he hopes is gonna work. So I guess all I could say is I hope the legislature kind of stands up and said, something has to be done about the cost of education. I'm, I'm not gonna deny that in the least, but let's do it in a way that it's not gonna throw the baby out with the bathwater.
Does anybody have any other questions? Not hearing any. All right, guys and gals.
Doug has a question.
Oh. Yes, Doug and Mary Lou.
Hi, uh, Doug Parker's, I follow road. Uh, can you tell us what's the student population in Halifax now for the elementary and for the secondary, uh, student?
Uh, it's on page 16. At the bottom, it breaks down, uh, what we had from the 24 and what's anticipated right up through 28. And then the, yeah, and then the elementary is up on the top.
Okay, I gather that's in the separate school, uh, booklet.
What was that?
Is that in the separate school booklet?
Yes, there is. I believe it's available to download on the, on the supervisory website.
Right, okay.
And there are some that are at the town office too.
Okay.
So do, would you like me to read what those numbers are?
Well, we can look them up.
Okay.
Unless someone else needs to know. Well, Mary Lou says she wants to know.
Okay, so it's 66 between grades K and eight. And then, and then if you add the, um, the 29 high school students, brings it up to 95.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah, so those are different numbers than what you see on page 12. When they start talking about, um, the weighted ADM, the weighted pupils. That's when it gets to like what Chum was talking about where they add. This gigantic formula for poverty and for English language and all kinds of other things. That the state does. Yes, Edie. Oh.
So my question is about.
Another article.
Article four.
Yeah, Article four is cause.
Reserve fund.
To move $100,000, um, from the, to the, to the surplus. Of the surplus to the reserve fund for maintenance. So. We had a fund balance to start with and it was 200. Yeah, about 170 something thousand dollars. And the school needs some pretty major repairs to its heating system, right? We've gone through a couple of different, um, stages to that. Uh, it's computerized stuff now, so it was a matter of upgrading the valves and the, and the pipes and then the control systems. And you know, we're working through the, the last phases of that component, but our boilers, the two boilers we have are pretty dated. I don't even. They're, oh, they're original. Okay, they're original. What year would that be? So they're not from 92. Um, so we have old boilers. And what we're looking to do is we need to have something in reserves to start thinking about how to replace one of those. And what mechanism we're gonna do for that.
But this 100,000 is coming from a, not, you're not.
It was from, it was the fund balance. We had that 170 something thousand dollars. And so we, knowing that we're gonna need to be spending that money, what we did is we, we kind of split it up and we put some to. Reduce the tax rate in the, in the budget that you're gonna be voting on and then the rest is going into the reserve fund.
And is there a balance reserve fund now? Like we put money in last year, I think.
We did. Where is that number? It's, what number is that, Chum? Yeah, I want us, I'm trying to find it on the. I thought it was gonna be on page 11, but I'm not seeing it. Six. Okay. Right.
Sorry, page number again?
On the top of page six.
Thank you.
Yep. So it was, it was 42899. I believe there's 25998 left in it. Right, yeah. Any other questions about either the reserve fund or the budget? No, I'm not seeing anybody online. No, all right, folks. Thank you very much for your time and we'll hopefully see everybody at town meeting. Have a great night, folks.
Thank you.
All right. Emily, could you do the honors for stopping the recording and doing whatever? Oh, Edie's here.